Uh, quorum.
Quorum.
Whatever you want it to be.
So, uh, we'll just receive a meeting.
Yeah, almost.
Okay, here's Rich.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you all for coming. I know this is an off-schedule meeting, so I do appreciate the effort to make it here. It's kind of a special meeting to have a public hearing for, um, I guess the name of it is One Boulder Path Road Incorporated. But Craig isn't here at the moment, so we'll start with, um, a review and acceptance of the, uh, September fourteenth. Meeting minutes, as you recall, we had so many changes last time, they wanted to redo the draft. So, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read it. I'll start it out with, uh, line sixty-eight. Just a small thing. She suggested that perhaps if we start the infrastructure, I think that's supposed to be if we start with the infrastructure as a, as an item to bring to the town.
Line one thirty-seven. It's not that there is a possibility of cross-sections, but they are creating four cross-sections, four possible cross-sections.
One thirty-seven.
One thirty-seven.
So, when did you want that?
Talking with the engineer, uh, the engineer is creating plans and
Possibly cross-sections.
There will be four possible cross-sections, or plans that will include four possible cross-sections.
Did Mark say he was gonna contact Craig?
He, that's, I believe he was, yes.
Do you wanna move the presentation?
And I can see where it's, uh, it's, uh,
Do you have a cellphone?
Most of the water.
I don't have a cellphone, I have the golf clubhouse.
It's falling through the, you know, the spaces between the boards.
Chris probably has one of them.
No, I have this one.
Oh, here it comes.
Here it comes. Yeah, I have both.
Yeah, it's a special meeting.
Yeah.
Because we're just getting, we're getting, it gets no Sunday, so that one drops.
Oh, yeah, which we do.
Any other comments on the meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes submitted.
We have a second?
It's a little bit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the, uh, minutes are, uh, September fourteenth are submitted as amended. And now, um, we have an application for the board for, um, a storage unit on the golf course maintenance yard. And, um, I've looked at the application and would suggest that we accept the application and go to a public hearing. Anybody have any questions? Have you had a chance to review? It's been online. Therefore, I'll make a motion that we accept the application as submitted.
On second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then we have an accepted application, so we'll open the public hearing. And Craig, do you wanna make some sort of a presentation?
Sure, um, I do have a bigger map.
I passed out the half-size maps that just show the site location.
I do have a, obviously, a bigger one. We just wanna, I wanna get, um, one of those steel storage containers. They're basically, uh, eight feet by nine feet by forty-five feet long. They are, they can come in and out, uh, but they are pretty much permanent, permanent structure. And we're gonna try to use it to, uh, bring some of the stuff that we have outside inside and to control some of the storage that we have. The other thing that we kinda have run a little bit of an issue over there is that we got a lot more equipment than they had before and, uh, it's kinda tough to keep it all inside. But the big thing is moving the summer from the winter. The winter equipment can go inside during the summer and then the summer equipment go back inside, we can switch things around a little bit. That's basically it. It's gonna go on the backside of the building. I think the building's about eighty feet long, so it's not the whole length of the building, but we'll tuck it right into the backside of that building. Don't propose to take any trees down. There are two trees that I'm gonna have to lift up on the valley road just so they can back the trail, the container in. And then hopefully put the trees right back in the ground. Don't propose to cut any trees at all. There's plenty of wood from the backside of that building.
Okay, we have a few pictures here. They're part of the application. I don't know if the public wants to come up and take a look at them or if any of the board members want to take a look at them. But they, uh, we have a picture of a, it's part of the application, there's a photo of a storage container that is said to be similar, uh, to the one being proposed. Would you say that was true of Craig?
Yeah, it's the same, the town has four of them up here.
Okay. Is the color about the same as it's going to be, or?
I, I don't know, I, I could have to get one, pick one out. The, the only difference on the color is that, uh, if I lease it, I probably can't paint it right away, but if I buy it, then I can paint it. What I was thinking of doing was leasing it for a year and then if everything works out and everything is fine with it, then probably purchase the unit.
Sure.
Greg, this is exposed to that fairway, correct? Well,
It's on that side of the fairway, yeah, but it's not exposed. There is a fair amount of trees there now.
So, there'll be a good buffer in, in there for visual?
I don't think you're gonna be able to see it, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Certainly not in the summertime, and the wintertime is still pretty
Yeah. We've got no control over the winter, anyway.
No, but it's, um, like I say, I, I have no problem painting it. I have, I'd have to talk to them. I have to talk to the, there's a couple of trailer companies out there. If, um, if I'm interested, I probably would, if it works out, I would probably purchase it.
Basically, this looks like a shipping container. Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
They are, I've used them, not here, but I've used them in the past. They're very inexpensive, um, they're very secure, and they do last a fair amount of time. If we were to construct a, an addition onto the building, that would be considerably more money.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Do you, uh, do we have any comments in favor from the public?
I guess that's us. My buddy Bates, I've been in Waterville since nineteen eighty. I've seen, um, the growth. It's good. Of course, actually Craig's doing a great job. It's much greener than it's ever been. Even though we had a dry, dry summer. He's done a lot of good things, bringing in the sled hill. I think that's a great activity for the community. But, uh, I don't know whether you were on the committee when, when the Waterville company decided to build this building in the first place. But I spoke up then and, uh, what I call it, spot zoning, which is the worst kind of zoning you can have in a community, I think. It deteriorates the remaining parts. It, uh, it was described to us as a storage facility for the lawn mowers, et cetera, which is reasonable. I thought there were better places for it. But, um, as you can, as you know, the trees that are, were there, or are there, are thinning. And it's becoming visible, not only from the valley road, but, uh, from, uh, those of us on the golf course who have looked at this area. I personally will probably not see a thing, but you, you, the, the pine trees, white pines, the lower limbs do, um, deteriorate or die, or whatever. Anyway, they are thinning, so when you're playing golf or whatever, you're gonna see this this building here. Waterville is one of the prettiest, nicest towns you can answer, if not across the country. This maintenance area is in the apex of the best view of Osceola and Tecumseh. There's no better view. This is what you see going down Boulder, Boulder Way. Stockpiles of dirt, sod, materials, miscellaneous sand. It wasn't that way when I bought this place, my place in nineteen eighty. It was a nice evergreen area. It's grown into that. It's, I wanna, I wanna say that, this is nothing against Craig, but it's the, the fact that this site was chosen as a, as a building site to begin with, and it is the best part of the valley. Another view, which is obviously seen by any tourist who comes into this town. You can't miss it. That's the front of the building. This is the back of the building, nap. And it, the, the container will probably take summers equipment, but are we gonna still see some of this junk there after this container's there? I've, uh, personally have owned, because of, I'm in the publishing business, and I do, I used to own one of these things. But it was in a commercial area. And they're good units. But they're ugly. And they're temporary. And they don't get back, and they don't get fixed up. They surrender. I just don't think we need that in the center of Waterville Valley. If you really wanna make this town great or could do better in the future, this is not the way to start. And nothing against Craig, he's doing a good job with the golf course. But this is, again, spot zoning. Not a good thing. It should be in the woods, way off somewhere. And we do have storage areas in the town for this kind of things, correct? The Waterville company put them in by the Waterville Inn a few years back. So that's where I think this equipment should be stored. Not, not in the apex of the viewpoint. Thank you. Amen.
That's a ditto.
I, I have a, um, house next to Buddy's. And I've been there for not quite as long, but I have the time to get around. And I do think you have to work very hard to keep things to keep things that are attracted, to remain attracted. There's always something that sneaks in around the corner and detracts from the land. I think Buddy's pretty well spoken as well as I, better than I can about the effects of the head on. I'm, I'm, I'm against it.
And could we have your name?
Bill King. I'm Bill King.
Bill King.
On King Lane. How did that happen? We're gonna get into business on that one.
Okay, um, do anybody want to have those photos passed around, take a look at?
Do you wanna pass these around?
I, I had a hard time seeing them.
So, is there anything, Craig, that can be done to help camouflage a unit like that? So, it, it wouldn't be an eyesore?
I don't think, the, the actual where we're gonna put it is, is it'd be impossible to actually see it, I think, personally. And it's something that we're not gonna go in and out of on a daily basis, so it's not that visible. You gotta remember, we do have thirty-two acres, uh, of land there. We are maintaining, are maintaining it a lot differently than what was done in the past. And, um, thus, we need, we have a lot more equipment than we ever had before. I mean, that's part of it. I mean, not to blame what was going on in the past. They were doing, I think, pretty good with what they had going on. It is all accessory uses for the golf course. There's, we're not doing any contracting work outside the valley or in that, for anybody else. It's all equipment that we, I own outright. The dirt piles, uh, they're compost, one of, here's one of the compost piles that we actually turn over and reuse it. We have to put sand on the greens twice a year, so we have usually sixteen, thirty-two yards of sand sitting there. We do have loam and screen there. We do have other materials for the car path, for the, so that's the, basically, what all that items are. You know, I was talking about doing fencing, but I think sometimes fencing is uglier than, I mean, I could just kinda control it a little bit more. There's just a lot more equipment than what was there before.
Right.
I, it's the only level spot on the property. I don't, you know, it is right there in the middle, but I don't know where else you could put this, personally. I mean, if you, if you did this, it could snap your fingers and move it somewhere else. There is no other land available on the thirty-two acres that is as level as this and that is, is, is convenient as this to the utilities and stuff like that. I don't know. We do border five roads on that property. So, we're pretty much, and then the rest is all backing up to all residential houses. There's no vacant land anywhere on that property. Every property, every, the surrounding properties are all residential. I mean, we highly know that weren't a residential area. And I could clean it up a little bit more, but, um, that might, you know, that might have to take some time, a little bit, I guess, but, the piles I actually need, actually. I really do need them.
No, I meant more for the container, like, if there's any
I don't think, where it's gonna go, behind the building, I don't think you really, you'd have to take a site visit, I guess, to go out there and look. I mean, I think they took some pictures from, uh,
Just taken from the golf course?
Yeah, I don't know if you can see the back of the building, the whole thing. I don't think you can see the whole building. Like I say, I don't, I'm not anticipating taking any trees down. And we could add trees. I didn't put anything in the landscape thing, but, um, what he talked about was the limbs getting, um, that, basically, that whole area, that whole side there needs to be re-brushed out anyway because the limbs, the way it's growing in there now, they're just weeds growing in there, and the weeds are taking, are actually pushing the evergreens up. So, I mean, if those, if the weeds were taken down underneath the evergreens, it would be much more healthier product. So, that was something that we've talked about on their side, actually, is to, is to go in there and brush that whole thing down. Because the, the buffer would be actually much healthier. The buffer on the eighth green to these gentlemen's houses, I mean, is literally about twenty feet at this point on my property and zero on their property.
The, um, storage container would be right up tight against the building, is that true?
Uh, it'd probably be two feet off, I think, just to give some air between the
Yeah, it's gonna block the light.
Pretty, pretty much up against the building, yeah. It's, there's about fifteen feet width there, and we only need about eight or nine feet of that. There's no reason to put it too far away. I mean, you wanna tuck it right up against there.
How does that measure up to the eve of the building? Does it?
It'll be underneath that.
It's under the eve?
Yeah. The, the property drops down about a foot off the foundation, and then the foundation, then you got seven, six walls on the interior, and the plate's probably eight, eight something. So, it's probably ten feet at the backside from elevation, and these are only nine feet high.
Would you say you're willing to put in additional trees at the end where it would be exposed for screening?
Well, the end is, um, one thing I was looking at too, I don't know if, how many people are familiar with it, but we cut, they cut from the eighth green to the ninth, it goes right through the thing. I was thinking of moving that a little bit further down that cut through and then, uh, fence that, where the, there's one section of fences, just put in a couple of other sections of fences. And actually put the car path a little bit differently than where it, where it is right now. The, I can't, I'm not, not in front of us right now, but I mean, I do intend to add another building onto the site for permanent storage at some point. Uh, it is an accessory, all this stuff is accessory. It's not, I would consider thirty-two acres spot zoning. Uh, it's all zoned the same. You know, spot zoning is an acre here, an acre there. And this is thirty-two acres in a four-hundred-and-fifty-acre parcel, so, I mean, it's literally almost, you know, eight percent of the town, size of town. So, I think it's probably the largest zoning district, actually, in the town.
The renovation?
Yes.
I'm wondering if the chance of maybe painting it, the same
Yes, I don't have, I don't have that answer for you. I think if you talk to the, I talked to Tilton Trailer, there's, they're the ones that have, that do, that run to the town, I think. I don't think they really totally care. I mean, I couldn't do it spot, you know, purple with white dots on it or something, but I think if I
To have it blend?
If I did a forest green or something, I, I'd have to approach them. I don't, you know, I, obviously, if you own it, you do whatever you want.
Yeah. Could you find that out, just as a question, Greg, in?
Well, I'd be absolutely happy to do it. I don't, first of all, I don't think I'd get the red one that you got the sand, like the ones they have here. Uh, they, most of them are gray, grayish color. I think, um, and that's the ones that I'd be more into, to get. And that kinda blends in more with the, the color of the building, anyway. So, I don't, it's certainly not gonna be a red one, I don't think. Personally, I don't think you're gonna see too much of it, um, but that's, that's just me, and I'm not looking at it every day, I guess.
Terry, I have a comment. You know, it's I'm, I'm, we're on the planning board in a residence right across from this spot.
Well, I guess it's it's your decision whether or not you, uh, think you should recuse yourself, but
You mean sit right down here?
And they'd say the same, exactly.
Okay.
And you can't, you can't.
Okay, so, I just wanna say, I live right across from this spot.
Right.
At full-time. And I'm not quite a young fellow, but but anyways, this, you really can't see that pot that he wants to put it into. There's a lot of trees, uh, but what you can see is a lot of the, the stuff that's there now that he wants to put away. And I think it would be a great move. That's all. I don't have any problems with this.
What about the possibility of rerouting that road a little further within the building so that that, yeah, that, well, no, no. But, uh, your, your golf cart.
Valley road?
Golf cart road.
Which one you want me to move?
The golf cart road.
Yeah.
That, that goes a little further from the building so that that area, which is visible right now
Yes, because, uh, that, that's in my intentions to do that. And I'll just be honest with you, everybody, I mean, I've concentrated a lot onto the clubhouse and I concentrated onto the golf course itself and haven't really done much with the maintenance area. So, I do have priorities in my little list in my mind. Can't leave that once. I, you know, um, so I have, we have thought about, I have thought about redoing the club, the whole maintenance garage anyway and redoing the whole thing. That's my intention, is to redo that building, anyway. And probably add another carriage house type structure onto the property. At least onto the, uh, the side of the piles there. But that's not in front of us at the moment, and I don't have any plans, and that would be a whole different hearing. But yeah, I mean, that's a long range plan, a long range, maybe next summer, I would definitely, I can reroute that with a, going from number eight to number nine. It's probably, it'd be a good idea. There is room to do it, kinda, you know, nicely. And it's probably in my best interest to keep the, the golfers away from the maintenance stuff, anyway. So, it was to try to configure it a little differently. I definitely have been looking at that lately a lot. So, and to continue the stockade fence that is there now, there's one section, but go across, maybe four sections across. Probably put a gate, you know, a stockade gate in, but still, it'd be just, 'cause once in a while you'd have to get through it, I think. Basically, I think we could reroute that area. Ninety percent of the golfers go between the, the two properties, but occasionally they actually drive around the road, so I don't think that's a good idea, really, so. That would give me more room on the backside to actually move stuff from the front to the back. I don't know how appropriate all that would be, but that's, that would be one direction, yeah.
But you're not suggesting that, 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 you're not suggesting rewriting of the road? Your path as a part of this storage?
I could, I mean, I'm not, I, I probably would, anyway. I'm probably gonna, anyway. I would like to get the container in now, or at least till before winter here. I do wanna move stuff out of the garage, you know, out of this, into this container. And there's some stuff that, that could, could, start to get, you know, removed there. You know, obviously, we're in a spot where it's hard to do, um, to get rid of stuff. It's hard to get rid of demo and things like that.
Wait, what was your question?
There's a car path that, you know, the opening that you see right now, when you, when you stand on your edge of your parking lot, you'll look and you'll see that opening there.
Yeah.
I can reroute it in a different section or a different angle, actually, to get over to number nine to get it away from the backside of that building, which might not be a bad, I, we've been looking at that anyway. We have a clean-out section there on the backside there.
I see.
Where we wash all the mowers and stuff and just as soon get that away from the, um, golfers themselves, because the grasses, obviously, as you wash the mowers off and stuff like that, the grasses start smelling, I mean, you know, so.
Would you have, direct the path closer to the street side, or the other way?
No, the other way.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, in literally like twenty-five feet or something.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Huge amount. But there's room amongst those trees and there's areas there that would come up.
Yeah.
And then I could go straight across. To make it more defined.
Yeah.
Car path, let's say. I have cleaned up some of the other car paths on the property.
If you were, excuse me, I have a question for Mr. King and Mr. Bates.
Go ahead.
Um. What do you, the building's not going anywhere, it has to be there, and the golf course is not going anywhere, it's gotta be there and it has to be maintenance done. So, what do you think that could be done that you would like to see there? Uh, you know, he has the little, the pictures you took on Boulder Path Road, he has areas where he has to put dirt, gravel and stuff, you have to have that. So, what do you, what's your thought about that?
Well, if you, if you look at the original plan, uh, those are where the dirt piles are, is going to be parking. That's what was approved, I assume. That doesn't really answer your question.
No.
But I just point that out, that, that, that's what we all accepted or approved, that you, you approved was gonna, it was gonna be parking. And now it's piled with dirt. Um, I mean, there are, there are areas in the valley that you could either buy or, as I said, you could get one of some of the storage units, some of the.
Do you think that's fair though?
I, I, not without the acreage, no, I, I don't think it's, it's, it's an option, you guys have options.
So, if he looked.
But I, or, I just, I just, I, I guess my feeling is if it were more permanent, you built a building. I just, you know, storage units, so we get one, does that mean we're gonna get another one and another and another? They're very easy to bring in.
Yeah.
You can buy them for two thousand dollars, at least the one I did. Um, so I'm well, well aware, I just, I don't know, I just, I just, you know, when people's, when they, they, they associate that with, you know, trailers like in Maine, in the backyard, it's, it's destroyed and had a fire.
Yeah.
It's just, it, it, it has bad connotations.
From what you've seen though.
Temporary trailer in the middle of a, of a recreational area. I mean, with, how many golf courses or that you know would allow a temporary building to be on the fairways? I, I, I don't play golf, but I just, I, I doubt if you'd see very many, at least not the ones that, not the club that I belong to in Massachusetts.
I can understand your reservation because where you have dealt with these containers before, being all over the place, and I understand your comments about that. But I also understand that Craig has, and you already said it, has been very respectful to the town of Waterville, individual effects of what he's doing.
Yeah. See, that's, but this, the problem is, I don't mean to cut you off, but we started making this a commercial area and a recreational area, that's what I call spot zoning.
Yeah.
That, that's not his fault. It's there, and therefore, another word for it is creep. Call it commercial creep. Commercial creep or whatever you want. If you start here and it's, oh, it's not that serious, so we'll let it go, and we've got another thing, it's not that serious, and he's doing a good job, so we let that go. Where does this stop? Um, I don't know. I, I mean, I have, I, I didn't think it was my prerogative to go around on his property to find out other better places. That it could have been, or some of this been. Um, I, I, I guess, I guess I'd rather see a stockade fence maybe than, than a, a corrugated metal container.
I don't think you're gonna really see that container though.
Uh, you do, you will now, you see the, walking down the course, you see the windows and you see that junk, maybe, maybe through that path that we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, once you go through the path.
If you're walking to that green, which we walked down there, when I walked to town, you, you go right by it. And, and, and you know the pine trees, it isn't, it isn't the undergrowth that causes the lower limbs to die, I assure you. It's the height and the height of the tree and, and blocking the, the sun from the lower limbs and the lower limbs die. I've got them all over my property, there isn't one limb that's fifteen or twenty feet that's green, they're all dead. So, I, you know, I, I, you know, if I, if I wanted, we, if we wanted to go and tour around a golf course, we, maybe we could find a better site, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I was just curious about what you saw, I mean, the site's not going anywhere, so.
I, we don't want it to go anywhere, we don't want the golf course to go.
So, I'm wondering if, I'm just wondering what you thought, how you would deal with the way it is right now. And I'm talking about the site on Boulder Road that you don't like.
I, I would say build another building and store it in the building. We, you've got that site now, why not use it? You said, you said the golf course is not going away.
Right.
Right?
We, yeah.
I hope, I hope.
Yeah.
Uh, it does, it has changed over the years, we've lost, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Pieces of it, uh, and I hope we don't lose any more. But, uh, if, if, if it's not going away, then why not do it right? And build a building. On that site. Where you can, where it's a nice building, the building is, is reasonable, it's utilitarian. Why not build a building and do it right?
Could I ask you a question, sir?
Yeah.
You know, economically, it may not be feasible for him to be able to build this carriage house that he's talking about for future. If this container came in on a temporary basis for him to have the storage and Craig worked with the town as far as making people somewhat happy, not going overboard, until he had the finances to build this other building to store that, and then that container could be removed.
That's a good idea.
Well, I think that's.
As long as there's a time limit on it.
Well, I think the time limit would have to do with dollars. Um, and I think that Craig maybe could offer a little information, sorry, I put you in that spot.
No, it's all right, um. I, I don't oppose, I don't think the container is meant to last forever anyway. Um, it is kind of, a building would be much more practical. Uh, but the diff, like you said, the economics, I mean, this is us, for a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month, I can get that container tomorrow. And a building's probably gonna be closer to eighty to a hundred thousand. And that's, you know, then that would cost some other, you know, right? Um, I'd put a limit on it if you wanna do it, you know, either four years or five years, I'd be happy to do that. I don't think, I don't think it would go that long, but that's why we, we don't have to come back here every month, I guess.
And the other thing I think that we have to think about too, since Craig has owned this property, I'm amazed coming, I don't, I'm not here in the summer, but coming back this summer, this fall and seeing the improvements that are on the, the fairways themselves. It's such an enhancement to that whole area, that wall, that little sugar shack you've got for the, you know. I don't think he does things in a, uh, short manner as far as putting things together, he's very, uh, proactive about, you know, improving the area itself, and I think that he's done an awful lot since he's acquired this property, and I think that we as a town should give him that short window for him to have that container until he can get the funds to build it, to build something pleasing to the eye instead of putting up something that's makeshift in the meantime.
I'd, I'd be amenable to a time limit on it, um, I would like to put it out there just so that we, you know, whatever, to see what happened, but it definitely would definitely amenable to a time limit.
Do you think you guys, would you, serves be an improvement of, of something like that with a time limit as far as knowing that that container would not remain there?
Well, I'm always very vague on the future.
We all are, sir.
When someone says, oh, yeah, oh, five years, that, that's like Never Neverland.
Not necessarily, sir, if we have it in writing for the board.
I, I think if it's in writing, I, I'd go along, I mean, I, it's, I wanna be reasonable here. And just, you know, I brought it up only is because, you know, you're trying to sell Waterville Valley.
Yeah.
And we're all in here to sell Waterville Valley. And it, you know, you, you, a lot of towns in New Hampshire are pretty hockey talky. Uh, and, um, just hate to see it get ruined, and, and so I think a five year in writing, uh, would, would be acceptable.
Well, it's ki- it's kind of a good way to, you have an end to a means, Greg, Craig can do what he needs to do. And we're all on board as far as what's going on with the club, et cetera, and the improvements that are being made to the, to the entire area. And they're, I, I'm just shocked at the improvements, they're beautiful.
Yeah, as I said right off, the, I said so much greener than it ever been.
It's just the entire maintenance area, I mean, of, of the course itself and the buildings, just beautiful.
So, you know, if we could, if we could approve it as a very temporary, temporary, under, underlying or whatever, and, and it will be removed after five years, it would be something like.
And he may even surprise us and approve, make it shorter.
Yeah, well, we hope so.
I mean, it's not the most practical, it's just a quicker solution to a.
Yep.
Problem with stuff, um. You know, um, yeah, ideal thing would be, but you gotta remember that if we do another building, it's gonna be a little higher, it's gonna be a little bit wider. Can be a different design, but.
He has to come in front of us for that, right?
Well, yes, I would probably would.
I would think so, yeah.
For a couple of reasons, it's a separate lot there and going back and forth about getting rid of that lot. Be honest with you, I don't know why it was subdivided off. Um, so I don't, you know, there's a lot line issue on some stuff.
Mm-huh.
Um, I might go back and try to ask you to rescind that subdivision and to make the parcel one big parcel again, um, that I'm not causing, it's not in front of me. Probably would relocate the car path regardless of whatever you guys said, um, I'll be, it's, it is a temporary building regardless.
Mm-huh.
However, if it's, you know, one day or five, five years, it is literally a temporary building. So. And the other thing is that I think is a little bit, I look at the valley much differently than I did in the past, and it's, I look at more like we're a town with resort amenities and not the other way around. I'm not so interested in quote unquote selling the valley, cause I think from my experience and my, and been proven fact, I guess, is that the money is right here, you know, for me to make money or to make the thing work, I have to satisfy the homeowners. And that's really where I, I've kinda zeroed in on, and, uh, on any given day, I bet you we're probably eighty, ninety percent homeowners and ten percent guests. Um, there are literally eleven hundred condos out here, and any given weekend, there's three thousand people in those condos. Hopefully they're owners or relatives are owners, and then there's two hundred home on houses. That's where the, that's where the business is, it's not in the three hundred and fifty rooms that they have over here at the hotel, that's, that's, that doesn't work. So, we, we, I've zeroed in on trying to satisf, is to turn it into, is to satisfy the town members. And the fact is that we, I, I had another business down, down south that was backed up to residential, so I'm very well aware that we are, uh, we're rocking and rolling over there and, uh, we have all these neighbors, and I'm constantly, you know, I talk to probably, just talk to them, you know. Occasionally, but I do talk to the, the other ones, they're right on the golf course, you know, make sure that they're, they're happy with what we're doing. You know what I mean, and make sure that we're not causing too much of an uproar. We are open at night now, a little bit later, but, you know, I try to be home by nine myself, so, I don't wanna get out, I don't wanna turn the thing into a big deal. And, uh, so I'm well aware that we're in a residential neighborhood doing our business. And that said, we do allow the neighbors to access their, back of their property through our pro- our property all the time, I mean, anytime they do any major landscaping in the back of their property, they almost have to come through our property to do this. And that's defined and that's cool, and I see why that works. And, uh, I do talk to them, I try to talk to them as much as possible. You know, I do try to talk to the neighbors, cause it literally is a business, and, uh, and it's sitting right in the middle of all these houses and condos. The same token, I gotta put on my jumps on there.
What about the screening issue, uh, is it, uh, a stockade fence that's, that's acceptable, or are you willing to do it?
It's a cheaper route, yeah, um, I would probably, that path that we're talking about, I think that you're familiar with, and I could show it on the map, I guess, is, uh, would be better to move it at an angle over, away from the building a little bit more, and, uh, I have looked at that pretty heavily because what we're doing. Again, we access the back of that building with the garage door on the backside too, so, we're in and out of that door a lot. And that's where we're washing all the mowers on the backside of that building, and that's kind of a messy job.
So, you're saying as a part of that, there's a stockade fence there as well to, to screen it, or?
I'd be happy, I mean, I'd probably do that regardless, if that happens here, I'd probably literally do that regardless. I'm trying to tweak every little spot that I can.
Yeah.
On a, um, but I, I'm not a big fan of us coming in with a million dollars and just spending all the money. I just enjoy it a little bit at a time and, and just kinda knock off the, the huge list of things that need to be done. To get the grass to green up, we, you know, I bought a big sprayer, you know, we have sprayer for fertilizing on liquid now, I mean, we're not, you know, um, so it's all going down liquid form and that requires a huge sprayer that's parked in that building and stuff like that, so there's, there's equipment. We're mowing much differently than they mowed before, we, there are definitions of the mowing, you know, between the fairways and the ruffs, and there's two sides of ruffs, there's the fairways and the green. Those all require different mowers for the different heights. They would occasionally, they would mow at all the same height, and that required one mower, you know, now I have to have, or I'd like to have, and I do own, is, is four mowers that actually do the fairway. And some of them are a little bit bigger than the ones that they had before. Um, and I'm looking to replace one of the other fairway mowers with a bigger fairway mower. Mainly cause it's, um, if, if I get a bigger mower, I can do the whole thing quicker myself. And I just assume do that than hire somebody else, actually, to be honest with you. So, there's, the equipment's changed a lot, totally changed, and then the tubing hills requires, you know, they used to bring the equipment in from the mountain, we got, we have the equipment there now. And that probably will only slightly grow too, is the tubing thing, the tubing thing was very much, uh, literally bringing in a hundred people on a Saturday or Sunday outside the valley, we're probably bringing a third of the businesses coming outside that, outside of the valley. I think we're competing head to head with the mountain, I don't think they really care, but we are, we're doing most of our business during the day now, on the tubing hill. Um, it's not nighttime operation, uh, we do stay open till eight o'clock, but, uh, we could probably shut that down at seven, but we do shut right off at eight o'clock and get, get out of there. Uh, but the tubing thing's turning into a suddenly a bigger deal. And that, that, you know, could potentially grow actually. Uh, and we're gonna use the park, the parking area on, in front of the maintenance garage, that, in front of these piles, they'll all be plowed out and raked out for the plowing. Uh, we were gonna be, cause we had problems with parking last winter. Uh, so we are gonna shuttle some people down that area, uh, we basically put all the employees down there last year, but that wasn't enough. Even in the summertime, we run out a little bit occasionally on a parking issue, but all the employees are parking down by the maintenance garage. So, we're trying to deal with the parking issue, same.
The container color, uh, does any, is there any discussion on what the container color should be?
I, I don't have an answer for you, I don't wanna continue this, uh, uh, hearing, I guess, is what I'm saying, I guess, uh, if I can physically paint it, I'll paint it. If I can, I can, I guess, I don't know, but it certainly would be a grayish color, the one that would probably be more tuned to pick. I think there are less of an issue color wise, and uh, even at forest green, which is fine, you'll see it. I think there are less of an issue color-wise than, uh, even a forest green, which is fine, you'll see it. It's forest green versus gray, let's say. Whenever you can see, you can see, I guess. And, uh, uh, even the stockade fence, if we put a stockade fence, the stockade fences are only six feet high. So you're not gonna really cut the whole container off by that. I mean, you can't get a ten-foot fence this summer. I don't, they don't make ten-foot fencing, first of all. And I think, I have read all your zoning bylaws, but I'm sure you have a fence code. I know the building codes, you know, stop at six feet, so...
I didn't know if you would consider painting it the same color as the building, I didn't know that.
I probably gotta repaint the building in another year. And again, that has nothing to do with, with this hearing, but I was gonna try to turn that building into like an antique garage. I was gonna put a front on the, big front on the front of it, to make it look like an old antique garage. Obviously, because I have the antique cars, and I was gonna make the garage more like a, look like, look like an old service station. But that's, um, something that I could do on my own, I think. And, uh, I was thinking of a white with green trim or something like that, just a little different. I mean, I'm, I'm listening to what they're saying.
Yeah.
And, um, we're, we'll be respectful to it.
And, uh, would your gentleman be acceptable to the idea that the, uh, storage container be temporary, be removed within five years? And that a stockade fence to screen the container from view would be applied?
Uh, that seems very reasonable, to me.
Any other comments from the board, questions? Um... Okay, I can't remember, do we have the motion before closing the public hearing?
No, you have to close, you would close the public hearing.
Before the motion?
And make the motion, then you can have final discussion from the board and vote on the motion.
Okay, further comments from the public? Further comments from the board?
Well, did you close the public hearing?
I haven't yet.
We should go, well, uh, right, well, no, I don't have any comments at this stage.
Craig, any further comments?
Uh, no, the only, my, I guess, my only question, I guess, I, is that, um, um, these are accessory uses for the zoning, underlying zoning that's there. And I just, if for the future, I mean, I don't, I haven't, when I talked to Mark about doing this, I, you know, I had no problem coming to planning board. I mean, they're usually good, that, actually, I mean, usually you pick up some ideas that, you know, I don't see all the time, right there. But I, I believe it's a, it's a, a use by right. I don't think there's much question in that. Because underlying zoning is, is recreational, and that's what we're intent to do. Uh, these are accessory structures to, to the underlying zoning. They meet the set pack requirements and, uh, are on the property. Know what other things that can be enforced, I guess, is my question, I guess, is...
Well, it's, uh, architecture, design, is what's in there.
Well, I'm not at, it's, it's not a permanent structure.
Right, but, you know, us looking at it, it's hard to know that it's meant to be temporary, you know? But that's, I think, the biggest question, and hence our comments is over the architecture.
Right, I mean, if I do do another permanent structure, right? I'd have to look at the by, bylaws, but did they really get into the, to the whole architectural thing? Or, because there's no date restrictions on the property as far as architectural design. I'm just thinking of my own head, when I was, if I have five years, I'd like to do it within, within the five years, to think about how, what I wanted to build, I guess.
You would go through a site plan, if you, yeah.
But, yeah, it's described, you know, as mountain rustic, right?
Yeah.
I forget the exact wording, but, yeah.
There, as far as my reading of the zoning ordinance, there would be nothing to prohibit in any way the use of a storage trailer. Now, you could argue whether we should have had the foresight to include those, but right now, there is nothing that would prohibit that. It only talks to travel trailers. Those are limited to seven days, RVs, that type of thing. But it doesn't talk at all about the, you're right, you know, the use of a construction trailer.
I think, I think as far as the architectural regulations, not while the roof line, the flat roof is not allowed. I think that's the only thing with the, the trailer.
And the way I look at what Greg is doing, as well as gentlemen, I think it's a good neighbor policy all the way around, that he's on board and you're on board, and it works well, so...
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate the good neighbor policy, I'm, uh, I just wanted to make sure where my, where I stood twice wide, I guess, to... You know, maybe I have a tendency to push the envelope sometimes, so I just want to make sure how far I can push, I guess.
I've got a question. Would we be able to, as a resident, put this storage trailer on our property?
I believe you could. But I don't know for sure. We don't really have much juris- jurisdiction over residential.
As long as it met this, as long as it met the setbacks. And, uh, I mean, there are storage buildings around now. If people have put them on residential properties, so I think, yeah, you probably could.
You'd have to get a building permit.
Yeah, it's been done on a temporary basis before. But I think it's something that we should, as a town, look at in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the roof line is the issue with snow loads and everything else.
Yeah, right.
So Chris does have, if there's a, if there's a building permit that comes before him, he does have some latitude with, with the flat roof and, you know, we can control some of it. But I think on a temporary basis, you probably can put them in ten feet.
Okay, then, I guess we'll, uh, close the public hearing, and I'll make a motion. I move to approve the application based on the following conditions.
Could we have a little bit more discussion on that?
We gotta make the motion first.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
I move to approve the application as presented based on the following conditions. Storage container is temporary and will be removed within a five-year period. Stockade fence to screen the container from view will be constructed. And I guess those are the two conditions I would put on it.
I'll second that.
Can we have a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I just, based on what Bill said, I'm, I'm slightly, as usual, confused. Do we have the authority to, to, uh, put conditions on this structure?
On the approval, we would, yeah.
Well, I think you can, uh, you know, does he have a right to go to the ZBA and have them taken off? The answer would be yes, you know, the, you know, do we have an absolute say? I mean, but, yeah, you, I think you could put whatever conditions you want on anything. Now, whether they're legal is a whole nother matter, which it's up to him to determine. Yeah, I don't know. That, you know, that's a, it's a question. I, I would like to say that there's some of the comments that have been made relative to Craig. First of all, is this, is this an allowed use? There's, in my mind, there's no question that this is an allowed use. He has, it's accessory, he's not operating a maintenance business out of there. He's basically ma- in doing maintenance on his own property. And, uh, from my reading of this, it's absolutely allowed. So I just wanted that to go on the record, there's no question in my mind about that, anyway, from, from personally reading this. I, I, I think there's some history here that's a little strange. I can't remember whether we, I think we originally approved this as a parking lot.
Well, where the materials...
And then he added the building later? And was it two, two different?
And it was supposed to have been a two-story, two-story building.
Were there two approvals here, or one? And, and, uh, and there is a, uh, uh, there's a thing in here, in the, in the, the heading of the, the guiding principles that we as a planning board are supposed to be considering. We're supposed to be trying to preserve the natural beauty of the valley. And, um, and, and I think in those previous approvals, I, I, we might have been a little bit more diligent about exactly what was gonna get stored on that corner. Now, I think, my personal opinion would be, having a trailer and getting some of the stuff that is now out in front of the property into the trailer would be an improvement as to where it is now. But, um, in hindsight, we should have been a little, I think, maybe a little bit more diligent, but it doesn't matter, it was approved.
I think that's where we're at.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Any further comments?
I, I don't think I can vote, I think I have to remove myself.
If you choose.
Do you think that's correct?
I don't think that, there, there's no, there's no, there's no dictation, it's such a factor, if you...
Adam, say it.
I might should clarify the, the stockade fence. I mean, are we putting in three feet of it, ten feet, hundred feet? To what, to what sides of the container are being covered by the stockade fence? I think we need a little more detail.
Wouldn't it be fair to say if it was pleasing to the eye? I mean, how...
I, I think we're going, this is why I raised my question. I think we're going down a, a path that is, uh, real quagmire.
I don't think it's unusual to call for screening.
No, the, I, I would just say, you have plans, what if you marked the plans that could be put into the record where, you know, generally he will put the fence? That gives, you know, Chris, as a code enforcement officer, then has something, you know, that he can work with Craig on for where the fence is gonna be put in. You know, short of going out and getting an exact measurement, at least you have the con- the concept of where you want it.
Because the fence is, you're gonna have to take some trees down and put a fence up. You can't do that.
No, no, I don't think it can be up that high.
Well, that's, that's the answer to your question, you'd have to take some trees down and put the fence up.
I, I, I say you don't have to take any tree, if you can get the trailer in there, you can get a fence around it.
I, I disagree.
Well, you just back the trailer in. You can get, if you can back it in, you can put a fence around it. The, the fence can be right up against the container, except for the opening.
Hey, Chris, you, you know the fence regulations, is there, is there, do we have any regulations that talk to the maximum height of the fence?
They do, but only when it's, um, near the property line.
It's only when it's near a, but this is near a property line.
Okay, so it's, it's, uh...
Although it's an artificial property line, it's near a property line. I mean, that's what I'm, it's to your point about going down to Quagmire. We may have a regulation that says you can't build a fence high enough to screen this thing.
Right, if you're twenty feet away from a property line, you can build it pretty much as high, you can bu- build it up to twenty feet.
Yeah.
So it's, it's basically a one-to-one off the property line.
Right.
Minimum of three feet on the property.
Right, we actually have a regulation that prevents you from screening out someone's view with a fence. It's the easiest way to say it.
Right.
And, um...
That's true, I never thought of it that way, but that's exactly what it does.
Yeah, no, that's what the intent was, I think.
I'm just, I'm just kidding. How many feet, oh, we have twenty feet. Around twenty feet? Twenty feet, so the fence could be twenty feet high?
Oh, no.
Not, no, I just, I just... So, uh, my feeling is, I think the containers are eighteen on, and, uh, it'd be nice to have it eighteen.
I, you closed the public hearing, so I don't know where, where this is going, but if you want my input on it, I will.
Sure.
Um, I propose to put the stockade fence would be probably on the upper lot, actually, working at the edge of that pad. I could show you on the map, I might be easier to show you on the maps here.
Oh, you want a big one?
You can see right here, what we're talking about.
Right, okay, so you're only bringing it to...
These are all tree, you can see, it's all tree in here, it's tree over here. This is the only...
That's your path right now.
Right, right. Stockade fence there, that's fine, um, you're still gonna see above it. And then I was gonna, like, relocate the path.
Okay, the suggestion is that the, um, the fence be placed across the clearing that's presently used for the golf cart path.
Oh, is this gonna go?
Goes from the tree line to the tree line. And it's, uh, at the boundary line, which is about twenty feet off from, probably about thirty feet off from the existing building. And then that the path would be relocated around the stockade fence to the north side.
That would be actually more practical for our, our uses of that.
And you're talking about an eight-foot fence on that, Greg?
Um, I, i- if I can get one, I, most fences are about six feet high, you know, ones that you see at Home Depot, whatever. You'd almost have to construct, we can't get a seater fence at eight feet, I don't think. And I think if you look at the building codes, the, it's, it's a question about how, when you get above that, you'd probably have to have an engineer fence, I guess, at that point. I don't think you could go above eight feet in the building codes of fencing. It's not gonna totally block it out, I think it would stop it from being somewhat visible.
What about the option of putting screening-type bushes in there as opposed to...
Um, I'd almost, if there's a water runoff that's gonna run, that runs down there anyway, and I, at some point, um, and we talked about relocating, getting a car path, you might have issues bringing a bigger piece of equipment through the car path, you might have to go around. I'd probably, if I did it, it would be one that would swing open and close. So that occasionally, that twice a year, that I'd need to get something bigger in there or something like that, that'd be a little different. There is a water line that goes right through that area, um, from the main and off, get our water service from the fairway, actually, from the building. At some point, that might need to be dug up or something like that, I don't know. That's where the water lines are going through right now. I could, it'd be permanent, to the extent the fence is permanent, I guess.
So you think the fence is better than plantings, because the plantings, you may have to dig them up to...
Well, yeah, and, um, the only good thing about plantings is they're permanent and they don't require maintenance really. I mean, and not, not to be rude, but to put, to, to, really to block this all off, I should put a fence along the eighth fairway. That would be the easiest spot to do it, it's block the entire property right off. I don't think that is a neighborly thing to do, but that's well within my rights.
Just going back to what Bill said. You do what he wants.
That's right.
A- as long as he's consistent with the zoning, and as far as I can see, what he's proposing to do is consistent with the zoning.
Without the conditions?
I, I'm acceptable, I will accept the condition.
Yeah, no, he accepts the conditions, and I think that's fine.
No, I understand that, I understand, fine, fine, quite my mind.
Yeah, but if he, if he insisted upon doing it, I think we'd have to, we'd have to take a look at whether it met the requirements of the code or not.
Yeah, and the point that I was trying to make about the architecture is on page thirty-one, Architectural Regulations, All Buildings, you know, the pitched roof like we talked about, um, and also, architecture must be compatible with Northern New England mountain resort style construction currently dominant in Watergo Valley. That was sort of what I was talking about earlier.
Is that under all zoning districts?
Yes.
Yes, se- section N. Yeah.
The town does have these containers, you know, it's not, they're not, I'm not the only one that would have one.
Right.
Right, the town technically doesn't have to follow their own regulations.
No, but we've got dumpsters sitting all over the place, some of which is screened, some of them are not screened. You know?
I'm hoping this will be new within a year, so...
Cool.
Okay, we have a motion before us, seconded. Um, there's been question as to whether or not the condition of screening is adequate the way it's written. I don't know if we wanna amend that, or...
Um...
Would you mind rereading it?
I'll read the two conditions. The storage container is temporary and will be removed within a five-year period. Stockade fence to screen the container from view will be installed.
I like that some of that, yeah.
What if it doesn't?
It's, you're back into enforcement of all of these codes and zones. Uh, you know, you, you try to work something out with the property owner, right? I mean, what are you gonna do? I mean, you know, are we going to, you know, legally, is there anything else we could do? I don't know.
All the planning board can do is approve or reject.
Right.
We can't enforce that.
We've run into this before with, with people promising to do landscaping and then don't do it. Or the bushes die.
Right.
And what's their, what's, are they required then to redo it? I don't think we've ever come up with a satisfactory answer.
I would just prefer that there be a map that has some, even if it's conceptual, but something drawn on it that we can use to say the fence was built generally the way the planning board wanted it, the way the planning board approved it. Because if you just use the words, it's very difficult for, you know, and if something happens to Craig and there's a new owner, we have a whole different set of viewpoints, um, coming into this. And so I, I would just request that the board mark up a map that you can agree to, generally that's where the...
Okay, um, Craig, you, you maintain that that's where you would put the fences, in that clearing between the wood line?
That's right, that's right.
Okay, I'm marking in red here where the screening is being proposed. For the board members, you can pass that around. It's in red.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll send it back the other way.
There's a gate there, that's, yeah, he wants a gate. I was gonna, yeah, fairway, yeah.
That's what I'm asking about.
If, 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 do we have a right to do it? Yes.
Yeah, we have a right to ask on the screening.
We have a right to ask. Now...
If he says no.
If he says no, he, you know, we could approve this, and, and he's either gonna meet the conditions or he's gotta go to the ZBA and have it overturned.
There will, there will be a, a letter of approval or disapproval, whatever you do. We will give a notice of decision to the property owner and all the others, the same, equal, and those. And then they have thirty days to appeal the decision.
So the, the only problem is, um, and a six-foot fence along the property line doesn't meet the fence regulation.
Has to be zeroed off the property line.
Even though it's...
Could you move the fence into where the, uh, the setback line is?
Could you move it in six feet?
Yeah, if, you know, I don't think I even know where the line is up there.
Yeah, someplace.
Well, you can measure off the building from the plan, probably.
Yeah.
The other, the other lots were all bombed, they were all there.
I don't, I...
Yeah, there was never, I don't think there were pins set in there when the subdivision was done.
Apparently, I've been going back and forth on, I, I personally don't understand why it was subdivided.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm drawing a blank as to why.
It was financing.
Cantland did it, but why?
Was it for financing?
I think he wanted, uh...
He wanted a residence above the...
Yeah, he did. That was the initial, uh, do you remember? It was gonna be a two-story residence, perhaps, upstairs.
Yeah, right, yeah, he was gonna house workers or something there, right?
But the same, totally, that doesn't require a separate lot.
No. No, it doesn't.
Doesn't recreation, I think.
It, it was, it had to do with his financing of the building with the rest of the...
The banks don't wanna let him have money unless there's separate lots.
He didn't wanna have to mortgage the entire lot, the entire whole...
Yeah, and usually that's why these things get subdivided.
Is that called a stockade fence?
And, uh, yes, and the sort of lots, yeah.
Well, I would just, you would, call it screening fence, give some discretion as to what kind of fence he wants.
Now, we gotta do it over again.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with stockade.
That's what we've been discussing, so...
There is a section of stockade there now, so I'd probably continue that line.
I think the intent of the guns being on the line, I know we have a solution to that, but the intent of that regulation isn't for a, a, a common property, so...
And if the fence is six feet high, he's gonna, doesn't have a problem, right?
If it's six feet off the line.
I, if he had a six-foot-high fence on the line, is that an issue?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is?
Three, three max on the line.
Three max on the line.
Three max on the line, alright.
But I think the whole intent of that...
Is the, is, is the inverse of what we're trying to do.
Right, right, so...
Alright. I've made a sketch here to be part of the application that shows a six-foot stockade fence being located between wood lines on that car path that you have, six feet off the property line. And I'm changing the condition to say stockade fence to screen container from view will be installed as indicated in the application. Okay, we have a amended, well, I'll read the amended, uh, motion. I move to approve the application based on the following conditions. The storage container is temporary and will be removed within a five-year period. Two, the stockade fence to screen the container from view will be installed as indicated in the application. Have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have a unanimous. Was that a aye or a nay?
No, no, it was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Do you wanna keep these photographs?
Okay, we're putting... Yes, thank you, gentlemen. That concludes the business that was scheduled, and because this was a special meeting, I conclude.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
My second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we adjourn. Thank you for being in this.